Tonight, we're going to be led, uh, by Mr. Goher.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert. I'd like to welcome everybody to the first meeting of this month, work session. I'll go down the agenda here. Anybody got any questions in regards to the agenda? How about consent agenda? Everybody good? All right, Mr. Odom, I guess you go number six spotlight on Thursday.
That will be Laverne High School, looking at their, with Motlow, their agreement to try to do some dual credits.
That could, that'd be new?
Uh, they're proposing it for another year.
Okay. All right. Any questions?
Uh.
Mr. Hold up.
Mr. Odom.
Yes, sir.
It's my understanding from the meeting the other night that there are some things that they're requesting of the board. Uh, are we at a point where we would want to discuss those to be able to respond on Thursday night?
Um, the only thing that I know right now, they are, have collected money is about $400 for the credit, $300 is Hope Scholarship. So they've, they've been able to acquire some, um, monies from other sources to help supplement students with that. The piece that may cost the board more is textbooks, if we furnish some textbooks for it. Um, you know, college textbooks and that sort of thing. So, um, you know, we've even been talking the last few days, um, would this be the time for those students involved in that to do an online textbook if you could get it? Because the trouble with, uh, very often with colleges, they change every semester sometimes. They, it's not that you could buy it, you put a pretty good investment in a book, it could be well over a hundred dollars and you'd use it for one semester and it not be able to use it. So if there's a way to do that economically for us, it might be an opportunity there to begin to look at that. But that's, we'd still have to be explored and even if the book were available online. So the textbook piece, I think, is the one that I heard. Did you hear some others?
There was also interest in, uh, some special transportation, uh, circumstances, whether it would be, uh, senior high students riding with, uh, other school groups, that's not typical. Uh, also possible drop off or pickup locations that would be other than school or home.
What we, we probably need to see, um, is what, I think he's working on something with Motlow, about the time of day that those credits might be offered to try to cluster them together for those students and helps them with scheduling. So after they talked the other night, we might see what we can do with that. We just need to know how far along they are on that scheduling piece. Whether we're talking about needing to take them over there at noon or something like that, or something for afternoon classes, or do they start the day there in the morning? I think this little things we got to know, see what we can work out.
So the presentation Thursday night is kind of an introduction for the board that will follow up with other action in the future?
Yes.
If you've been by Motlow, they're pretty much doubling the size of their professional building. It's pretty impressive.
These, these will be juniors and seniors basically because you don't, you're not going to get Hope Scholarship until, you know, you get to that point really. So, um, what you're talking about is older kids. Some of them that are seniors probably will choose to drive if they have that option. We just have to see, until they have enrollment, see how many. You don't really even know, are we talking about one bus? Or what are we talking about? We don't really have an idea yet of the numbers.
I had the opportunity to go to the January 28th meeting. Uh, I thought that the dual enrollment academy concept was absolutely phenomenal. Uh, I'm really looking forward to the Thursday night presentation. I don't want to take anything away from it by spilling the beans or anything, but, uh, there are links on the Laverne High School website that give additional information about this. And, uh, and I think that the opportunity is just incredible. Uh, so, uh, I'm, I'm very, very enthused about, about what they're bringing forward.
Mr. Carter.
How's this, but again, without spilling the beans, how's this going to be different than dual enrollments that we've had in the past? Because I know through Oakland and we had, I mean, I recall one of our valedictorians had all six classes at Middle Tennessee. They were, she was there on Oakland's campus. So how's this going to be different?
It, it's really not as much different, other than the magnitude of the way that it's being promoted for more students. Um, and I think, um, of course, one of the goals is to take some students that may not have been thinking about higher education, give them the opportunity to see how it might be, that you may take some kids who do not necessarily have a background, um, family background of going off to higher education, that, that you can get some of them in there and find that they can be successful in it. There's an opportunity to, to turn a child around, change their expectations or possibilities in their life around to do that. So, but it, it, it's the same process because you either have, there's a dual credit where it's taught at the school. You know, he may have some of that that he was working on too, to see that Motlow would send somebody over to the school and teach and it next would be done too, or you can take them to Motlow to do it. One of the things that they'll probably run into, certain courses will probably fit one of those two models. And so, uh, again, I don't know the last pieces in their negotiations with Motlow, what the opportunities. But early on, they were also looking at some of the courses possibly being taught at, at Laverne High School. We, we've done that too.
Well, yeah, I, I just, I just, I would just hope that these possibilities are, are well known and emphasized and publicized through every high school that we have. So every parent, every student recognizes that those opportunities are not just through one specific program, but they've been there a long time, uh, and well utilized by lots of kids. I mean, I, we, we talked a lot about doing it that way and it's a whole lot cheaper to get it through the high school credit than to have to go pay the tuition at the university level.
Well, even an AP.
Sure.
If a child takes an AP, they can get it, you know, get college credit for it. Of course, the difference is, um, at, at MTSU, the dual enrollment would be the tuition pass for MTSU. Um, the tuition price at Motlow is much less than that. The dual credit where it's taught at the high school, you do not necessarily have to be enrolled in the higher education institution. Usually it's the teacher endorsed by that institution. You're given their assessments at the end of it and all. But, um, that's, that's certainly much cheaper because you're not having to pay for that total enrollment at that university.
I would ask that the board would consider, as you hear the presentation Thursday night, that the dual enrollment academy is a, an answer to a question that I asked of what will we do at Laverne High School, uh, as students that did make up Laverne High School are, are zoned over to Stewart's Creek High School. The dynamics of Laverne High School will change a little bit. And I think the administration, once again, has done an incredible job of putting together a, a plan of action and, and branding it somewhat with the dual enrollment academy. And as you hear the presentation Thursday night, I would ask that you think about it and consider it similar to, uh, the IB program at Oakland. Uh, certainly there are things of like foreign language or something like that that's part of the IB program that is indeed available at every single high school throughout the system. However, the uniqueness of what the Laverne administration has put together with the dual enrollment academy, uh, I know that they hope, and I certainly hope, that it is a drawing card that may see, uh, students look to, uh, do a zone exemption to get to Laverne High School and get to that dual enrollment academy, uh, possibility. Uh, and so as you hear the presentation, I'd ask that you, you know, kind of frame it in that way and think, uh, maybe like the IB program, the, this self-creation, something that Rutherford County has come up with on its own. And so the cost of entry is much lower, not the cost that the IB program is to get into it. But through a partnership with Motlow here, the dual enrollment academy can really be something that is a drawing card for that particular high school and, uh, and the student body there.
Number eight.
Number eight, grant application for the adult education program. The Tennessee Department of Labor and Workforce Development Division of Adult Education is for the first time in many years requesting competitive grant applications for the adult education program from July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2015. Rutherford County's adult education program services approximately 1,200 seeking a general equivalency diploma, GED, along with English language acquisition programs. The application packet will require the grantee to service both Rutherford and Cannon Counties. The target population includes adults and the things that's copied here are straight out of the application itself. Uh, people who have attained 16 years of age, who are not enrolled or required to be enrolled in a secondary school under state law and who like sufficient mastery of basic educational skills to enable them individuals to function in society, do not have a secondary school diploma or its recognized equivalent and have not achieved an equivalent level of education or are unable to speak, read or write English language. Since this is a new application process and the grant application must be filed by 4:00 PM, February 25th, we're asking that Mr. Odom be authorized to approve the grant application when complete. The motion is to authorize the Director of Schools to approve Rutherford County's competitive grant application for funding of adult education with the Tennessee Department of Labor and Workforce Development for the program period, July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2015. Uh, I might say, um, it's really kind of caught us by surprise. I don't remember a time when we had to apply for this before, going back to Jim Tune and those that we've had for so many years that's involved. I, I, we've heard that some things have come down from the federal government, said this needs to be done. Um, it wasn't an option. I called about, uh, taking on, taking another county. Uh, so, I mean, if you apply for this one, you have to take on Cannon County too. They were having a, a class up there about two nights per week. Mr. Herbert's here and he can respond to many of the things that you do. I did speak to them in terms of, I said, you have to realize Rutherford County's investment. I mean, we've actually built a building over there. You're using rooms really at no charge. We're paying utilities basically at no charge and we're paying some of the salaries of the people that's directing it. The Labor and Workforce Development are actually paying for a lot of the teachers per hour and that sort of thing with the program. But I said, you're asking us to pull additional funds from K-12 education to fund adult education. Not that it's not very important to Rutherford County, you know, I understand that. So our dilemma is that we're working on now is trying to, we had hoped to have to, you know, the original motion we had here for let you to see the budget part. But we're having trouble getting all of those pieces together. Jeff Sandvik and his people are working on that with, uh, Cony Chism and all with adult education. We're really trying to nail down some associated costs to be able to make a good bid. Um, it's been, it's been a very difficult process in a very short period of time. And the application itself, I don't know how many pages it'll be. Uh, James Evans has looked at it and adult education people are looking at it, but it's, uh, numerous pages in the application. So, uh, that's why we, we would not want to have that ready by tonight to write that whole application grant process because you have to follow all their guidelines and, and, uh, write really what we've done in the past. But questions y'all'd like to ask Mr. Herbert tonight or, or some of us? And it's just not the way I like to do things. We're, we're, have a timeline that's not ours. I mean, that's what we're dealing with.
Anybody got any questions, Mr. Herbert?
I, I've just got a big question that you everyone's answered. What's the, what's the pluses and minuses of, of us keeping it or losing it? What's, what's the implications of, of either side of that?
They told me when I called in that Rutherford County probably would not lose it. I mean, I'm hearing, I've heard some things that even the technology center might be interested in it because, um, they're losing a lot of the Nissan training there that was going to the new center down there. So they could possibly bid on it. There's not a lot of people that can do this because we've had, like I said, 1,200 or so now of GED. We do have one classroom of adult high school over there, which they earned some ADM funds for. It's people that are still seeking to get a, a regular high school diploma. And, and some of you have been to their summer graduations, usually anywhere from 11 to 15 people that'll graduate each year with a regular high school diploma. So we would still have that program. It would still be a part of it. Um, but, uh, the, the main thing is to service the people, I think, of Rutherford County and Cannon County with the opportunity to get a general equivalency diploma or something. And how much obligation do we feel towards that and how much can we afford to make that happen? Uh, and that's what's kind of unknown to us.
So who, how's cer, how's Cannon County's being serviced now?
Uh, they had some of, you, you step up and answer that because you, you're more in contact, Mr. Herbert, if you'll do that. Warren County, I think, is kind of.
Warren County is serviced and Cannon County three days a week, uh, from 8 to 12 on Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays.
Okay.
Number eight.
I, I guess I'd be curious as to why they decided to shift that from Warren County to, to Rutherford, not that it.
Well, what this process is all about, uh, the state is trying to save funds. So they are consolidating counties. And Rutherford County is matched up with Cannon County, Warren County, Coffey County and Bedford County all work together. Nashville will have two programs. Uh, the city of Memphis, where they normally had two programs, will have four. And Knox County, uh, well Knoxville will have one program where they have two. Chattanooga have two programs. They'll have one. So they're cutting out 87 supervisors down to 46 for savings over $2 million across the state.
How does, tell them about the size of your program, the number we serve GED compared to some of these others? Because I know you know.
Well, for the last two years, Rutherford County has been the pace setter for GEDs in the state of Tennessee. We have been averaging over 425 GEDs for the last, well, since I've taken over the program, last eight years. But for the last two years, we have produced more GEDs than Memphis, Nashville, all of the metro, large metropolitan areas in the state of Tennessee. So we've been leading in that area. And then there are some performance, federal performance standards. We have met all of those standards and the only one that we've been lacking with, uh, and we're pretty close to it where they were asking for 6% of population served, we've had five. So, but other than that, all of the other performance standards, we have met for the last three years.
As you've had classes, we're talking about serving the 6%. We've had classes at Laverne, you had them over here in the cities area with something else.
We have at Laverne.
We've, we've had them all over the place.
And, uh, we, we have them at Franklin Heights, Patterson Park. And we just try to blanket the entire community, not only with AE program, but with English as a Second Language with partnership with the city school system where we are in Hobgood and Bellwood. And we are partners with Laverne Library and Smyrna Library. And we're doing some things with the title program here in Rutherford County with, uh, Smyrna Elementary, where they have a program and when parents come in, they have a program for students to come in in the evening to work with those students whose parents are participating in the English as a Second Language program.
I just hope the readers of the grant that give it to somebody that comes in and just files one of these things and doesn't realize what it takes to be a, serve Rutherford County and be a service to the people that we have. And that could happen, uh, when you don't really realize how involved it is.
Well, if I can make a couple of statements if I can.
Yeah, me, man.
Uh, to let you know how important this program is to the community. The Chamber of Commerce has a five-star rating. And the GED program is part of the workforce development program, which is the backbone of the working force in the community. So, but without this program, there are several components and several entities that, uh, we would not be able to serve. Most importantly, we, we look at, make sure that we have a workforce that's available for new businesses and industries that's coming into the community. Secondly, we want to make sure that the individuals that we serve, that they are ready for employment for those jobs that come into the community. But most importantly, if we do not have this program, we have to look at the students that we serve in our K-12 program because they will be affected if those parents are not employed within the, the community. And if they have not seek their GEDs to be compatible. All of the, uh, job markets within Rutherford County have raised the bar because since we have a university, our school systems are outstanding. So they've raised the bar. So they're looking at equivalents of a GED or a high school diploma for their employees within the community. So we have to look at all of those individuals that would be affected by this program if we're not successful with this grant.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert.
We'll communicate with you, I'll communicate with you as soon as we can come up with some kind of a dollar figure and try to interpret what some of the terms, what they're saying in this, that can be included in it. I mean, I mean, I think it's fair for Labor and Workforce Development to share in some of the cost of housing and stuff like that even too. I mean, whoever else does it will have to do some of that, you know, so. But, uh, don't know how that'll go.
Anybody got any questions? Number nine.
Number nine, termination of non-tenured teacher, appointment of independent hearing officer. The Director of Schools has suspended Barbara Knox, a non-tenured teacher from Oakland High School without pay with intent to terminate. Ms. Knox has been charged with insubordination. State law allows a non-tenured teacher to have a hearing before an impartial hearing officer if he or she chooses to contest the termination of his or her employment. Ms. Knox has requested a hearing and the Board of Education therefore needs to appoint someone to serve as a hearing officer in this matter. Mr. Toby Gilley has expressed his willingness to serve in the capacity as selected to do so by the board. Mr. Gilley is a local practicing attorney and has served in this capacity previously. The recommended approval, the motion to approve the appointment of Toby Gilley as an impartial hearing officer for the termination hearing of Barbara Knox.
Any questions?
At what level will a personal relationship with Toby Gilley, uh, preclude a board member from, I mean, several of us may know Toby, but when would we say, uh, I would recuse myself from voting?
Uh, you can just disclose that you know Mr. Gilley and make, if you want, make a statement to the fact that you're voting to be in the best interest of the school system. And regardless of whether your personal knowledge of him, you can do that.
Okay.
That discloses your interest.
Thank you.
Number 10.
Number 10 is charter schools. The Director of Schools received a letter of intent to apply for a public charter school for the 2014-15 school year from Learning Athletics and Wellness Foundation Sports Academy, the LAW Foundation. Board policy requires the board to appoint a review committee to assist in reviewing and evaluating charter school applications. The team shall be composed of members of the administrative staff for the district, community members, and the member of the board. The director shall make a recommendation to the board of which members of his administrative staff should be appointed to the team in February of each year. The board shall name the members of the team at its first meeting in March of each year. And the board shall also designate a chairman of the review team as a contact person for answering questions about the application process and receiving applications. The recommended approval, the motion is to approve the following administrative staff as members of the charter school review team for the 2014-15 school year. Be Paula Barnes, Jeff Sandvik, Richard Zago, James Evans and Shirley Bell. Then in addition, it would be the ones that the board will appoint, community and board member for that. We do not know, when somebody says a letter of intent to apply, if they'll actually follow up and apply. But we have certain statutory things that we have to do in preparation for that. You probably saw Williamson County was getting an application, I think, uh, too. So I think this would be a little more likely. And then the legislature still has some things in there that they may take over the whole process. So, I mean, we may appoint and then, uh, they appoint someone that overrules all that. So I don't know.
Comments? All right, number 11, uh, general discussion. I've asked, uh, Mr. Cardy if he'll go ahead tonight and just give us a review on Stewart's Creek High School. If you don't mind.
Thank you, Mr. Hod. We are moving, uh, very well at Stewart's Creek High at this point. The weather's really been cooperating. We have heat on and probably 75% of the building now. The CTE wing and, um, many of the classrooms and upstairs classrooms on the south and east sides of the building are in the completion stage where we have floor covering. We have, uh, painting done and we're in the process of dropping in ceilings. We're also in the process of putting in fixtures, uh, for science labs, computer tables, all of those kinds of things. Um, the gym is coming along nicely. We're in the courtyard area is completed now and that old wing of the building to the east of the courtyard is all enclosed, which is the ROTC building and that type. The, uh, ceramic tile is up all over the cafeteria, the floor tiles on the cafeteria. Uh, or in the kitchen, uh, the tile's down. So we are moving very rapidly and getting ready to put ceiling tile in many areas. Um, the site, I feel like we're ahead on the site. We've had decent weather this year, so we have a lot of the binding down in the parking lot areas. A lot of the curbs are in, most of them as a matter of fact. Um, and there's a couple of parking lots that have gravel down on them. We're getting ready to buy those as soon as the plants are open up and running again. Um, in the athletic, um, complex, the, uh, they're getting ready to mount a press box on the home bleacher side. All those bleachers are up. We have a pad in for the bleachers on the visitor's side. The building, the concession building is up now, uh, and they're beginning to finish that out. The curb's around the track, the base is in for the track, the grading is done for the ball field. So, uh, the, the building is moving very well and we're very confident that everything will be all right. Mrs. Joyce is working on a date for our dedication. And, uh, she should have that before too much longer. The traffic light out at Morton and the turn lane out there is in Smyrna's hands right now. I had a discussion with them last week, David King, their Director of Transportation. They're in the process of getting that ready to go out to bid and get that installed. They decide instead of taking any state money on that, they would go ahead and try to get that in their sale. So, uh, we're in the process of also, as you know, you passed the gates for Gossett and also Foxland Drive. So we're in the process of getting those bid and get those ready to install. Um, all of the geothermal wells are hooked up and there's about 25% of the building that doesn't have the heat on it yet. And we're trying to hook that up now. So permanent power is everywhere in the building. The greenhouse is up on the CTE area. Uh, it's just really coming together nicely. And I would like to just invite the school board at some point in, uh, maybe in April or May to make a visit out there with us and let's just have a tour of the building. It's a fabulous building. It's very impressive, well put together. Um, a lot of thoughts going into it from everyone in the peer group that, uh, reviewed the Segal Plan. There's also some other issues I'd like to look at, and that's the capital improvements and report on that for you. The, uh, 2012 and 13 capital improvements are, uh, either finished or in progress. So those are coming along nicely. The roofs are almost completed. All the parking, we're finishing up windows over at, uh, Holloway. And we're going to seal some of these cracks and things in this parking lot as soon as the weather is decent and we have, uh, in the spring for that type of work. We're also working on a, we've been requested by Director of Finance for the county to give them a five-year plan on our capital improvements. I think they're trying to figure out, uh, how to finance and pay for everything that we've requested over the, on our schedule and do some things that they have requests for. So we'll put that together. We'll bring it to you, and we'll give, go ahead and give, uh, Ms. Nolan a preliminary of that so that we start getting our numbers together, but we'll bring that in. And it won't be etched in stone, but it'll be a solid plan, so we'll have a guide to kind of follow. Also, Monday, I'll be, uh, in the McLeod, and a policy meeting. We'll be submitting the policy for energy conservation on Monday night. And, um, there's a $168,000 grant laying on the table at the E- Energy Efficiency School Initiative. That, you know, the $90 million was laid out a few years ago. We dipped into that when there's funds available to do our lighting and our sensors, I mean, our lighting. So now there's 168,000 of what money was left for, for education and those kinds of things. So just a tentative thought on this is there's several things you have to do. I'm on that particular board, by the way, uh, appointed by Lieutenant Governor a couple of years ago. But we have set in a motion, a plan, that you have to have an energy policy before you can get the money. So my hopes is we can get this policy in place. I'd like to also, I don't know how difficult it is, but it's something for you to be thinking about, would like to set it up so we set a, a thing in policy, or an item in policy in a way of calculating savings, so that we could have at least a percentage of that go back into the energy conservation, uh, methods that we are, have instigated and are continuing to improve, so that we can always get more savings. And out of this 168,000, I would like to hire an energy manager and educator to keep an eye on our computer systems and just go through and work those all out. Check them, get some settings done, and try to get everyone in the system on board so we can really, uh, continue our program and save more money as things come up and as we go along. So, uh, we've been very busy. We've also, security in schools, Mr. Odom and several on a committee have been studying that. And, uh, the consensus is there's some work we need to do, but we're also in much better shape than a lot of the counties around. When we're starting to look at it, our schools are in pretty good shape. There's been, uh, several dollars, uh, put into the school security over the past eight or 10 years, because we recognized it as a problem, and the Board did before, uh, a lot of other people have. So we've been concentrating on that, so we're getting in good shape in those areas. There's always some other things to do, but, uh, we're ahead of a lot of people. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer if I can.
Mr. Tucker.
I have, uh, going back to Stewart's Creek, I have no knowledge of geothermal whatsoever. I think it's a wonderful idea, but I just, I would assume that maybe that's a more difficult process in some places than it might be in others. Is that a fair assumption? And if that's, if so, was this a, a, a good place for this, or was it tough?
Well, it is, um, the, one of the problems with geothermal is having the area to put all the wells in. So we have enough room on those sites to put in the wells. A lot of people don't. For instance, those wells out there can be as much as 350 feet deep. And, uh, there can be 300 wells on a zone for the school, and there can be as many as five or six zones, uh, in a school. So the process is you drill these holes. The con, there's a constant temperature down in the ground. And you circulate a liquid through these loop pipes that go down into these wells and come back out. And it goes through the circuit of all these wells and comes back into a manifold, and the water is pumped into a heat exchanger within the building. You can imagine that if this ground is 50, 50 degrees, you put this liquid through there, and this 50-degree temperature is transferred into this liquid, and then the liquid, uh, the heat off of that's transferred into the system. If it's 18 degrees outside or 20 degrees outside, you're starting at 50 now and started, instead of starting at 18 degrees to change the temperature to heat it up to 70 or 68 or 72, whatever your set point is. So you're taking the latent heat that's in the ground, transferring it into liquid, going through a heat exchanger, pulling that heat out, and then pumping it out through the system and blowing it in the system, same way as cooling. Instead of taking 70, 80, 90, 103 degrees, uh, air temperature, you've got 50 degrees in the ground already. So you can pull the temperature down on water cooled systems by bringing it through a water cooled heat pump, by bringing this 50-degree temperature liquid through there. So it saves a lot of energy. And, uh, there's, uh, some issues when you get into small lots where you have to worry about heat contamination. So you pull all this heat out, and it's going back through and cooling this liquid down. There's a heat transfer there, because the heat's going back in the ground. And so you have to worry about that sometimes if you've got a really small area of heating the ground up. But in the areas, uh, it's been very easy at Stewart's Creek, because we have such a great area, large area to put all those in. So it's been, uh, very conducive for heating.
Number eight.
Kind of reminded me of a proud Papa when you were talking about the school.
I can see that. Where's the cigars?
Any other comments?
I believe, actually, they're scheduling, uh, times for parents. Is it tonight or Thursday night?
Thursday night.
Thursday night, and I think for parents and interested people at Stewart's Creek Middle School to talk about their program and information to Dr. Harrell and, and what staff he has now or planning that. So people get a chance to, one of several they're gonna have, but this week.
We appreciate it, Mr. Cardy.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other discussion? If there's no further discussion, we'll see everybody Thursday evening at 5:00. We're adjourned.